Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the April 12, 2021 Public Hearing of the Planning Commission on the City of Tampa Comprehensive Plan Amendments. We thank you for attending this meeting. Your comments and participation is encouraged. To minimize feedback in the audio, all participants in the meeting will be muted until it is their opportunity to speak. Planning commissioners should raise their hands or unmute themselves and turn on their camera to indicate they would like to speak. Please be sure to state your name at the beginning of your remarks for the benefit of the clerk. There will be an opportunity for members of the public to provide comments. When your name is called, you will be unmuted when it is your turn to speak. Please wait until the chair calls on you to begin speaking, state your name at the beginning of your comments, and adhere to the time limits. If anyone has difficulties or is watching via HTV and would like to provide comments to be included in the record for the local government hearing, please email them to planner@plancom.org. Planner@plancom.org. For those of you who are not familiar with our process, the meeting will be conducted as follows. The agenda item will be introduced. Staff will give their presentation with a 15-minute time limit. The applicant will be given the opportunity to make a presentation with a 15-minute time limit. Following presentations, members of the public may address the Planning Commission when recognized by the chairman. Public comment will be closed. Public comment will be heard for three minutes per person, sorry. The applicant will be afforded a three-minute period for rebuttal response. Planning commissioners will then ask questions. Public comment will be closed. Then upon a motion, a second and discussion, a vote will be taken. With that, I'll ask the clerk to please call roll.
Joseph?
Here.
Bernstein?
Here.
Cardina?
Here.
Dickerson?
This is Matthew Pleasant sitting in for Amber.
Dick?
Here.
Doughty?
Here.
Handy?
Here.
Cress?
Here.
Lenkov?
Here.
Moreno?
Here.
Powell? Commissioner Powell? Rodriguez?
Here.
You have a quorum, sir.
Thank you. First item on our agenda is City of Tampa Comprehensive Plan Amendment, TACPA 20-34, and the presenter will be David Haye.
Good evening. Good evening, Commissioners. David Haye with your Planning Commission staff. The one Tampa Plan Amendment for your review this evening is TACPA 20-34 located at 411 and 413 South Willow Avenue and 502 South Orleans Avenue. Here we have the general location of the subject site is located within the central Tampa Planning District, and more specifically, it falls within two neighborhood associations, the Hyde Park-Spanish Town Creek neighborhood and the historic Hyde Park neighborhood. And we have an aerial of the subject site. You could see, here's the subject site outlined in red. You have West Horatio Street dividing the subject site running east-west. Then you've got South Willow Avenue running up to the Leroy-Selman Crosstown Expressway. And then you have South Orleans Avenue a little further to the southwest of the main part of the subject site. Again, the area you can see has a mixture of single-family, attached, detached, and some multifamily. There's some multifamily located at the west end of Horatio near the Selman Expressway. It then also Hyde Park Village is off the aerial down here in the lower left. And then you have Wilson, Wilson Middle School to the southeast. A little background, this is privately initiated, small scale. It's approximately slightly larger than half of an acre. Currently, the three parcels, three separate folios, are all residential 10, and the applicant would like to go to a residential 35, future land use category. Here, we'll take a little tour around the neighborhood. Here, we're looking northeast toward 411. This is 411 and 413 South Willow Avenue. These, both these are part of the amendment request. Here, we're looking east toward 502 South Orleans. This is one of the third parcel in the request. Here, these are properties located to the west of 411 and 413 South Willow Avenue. So the 411 and 413 are off frame to the right. Actually, they're behind these units over here on the right. And then 502 South Orleans is off, off behind the camera line, basically. Here, we're looking south down South Orleans Avenue. 502 Orleans is out of frame on the left. You could see there's predominantly townhomes on the western side of South Orleans, and then it's hard to see behind these trees, but these are single-family detached on the west side of South Orleans. Here, we're looking south toward 1304 through 1310 West Horatio Street. This is the back of 502 South Orleans, and this porch here is, this is actually 413 South Willow, if you could see. So this is the development to the south of 411 and 413. And then we're looking east from 411 and 413 South Willow Avenue, so this is directly across the street, looking east from 411 and 413 South Willow. Here, we have the adopted future land use map. You could see the three parcels are all this residential 10, future land use category, represented by the tan. Then this darker brown that we see scattered about to the south and to the east of the subject site is this residential 35, and that's what the applicant is requesting. You go north on South Orleans Avenue, you get into a residential 20, that's the light brown. And then further westward down West Horatio Street where that multifamily is, it's actually Community Commercial 35. That's the old bread factory that's next to the Crosstown Expressway. And then up near plat, there is some community mixed-use 35, future land use to the north. Here, we have if the proposed plan amendment is finally adopted or approved, the three parcels would go to the residential 35, similar to what's to the south and to the east. Here, we have the potential intensity and density slide. Currently, the site, the combination of all of the three parcels can be considered for a maximum of five units or 8,022 square feet of non-residential uses. Under the residential 35, that would increase into a maximum potential over the three parcels of 18 units or a maximum of 13,752 square feet. Both the residential 10 and the residential 35, non-residential uses have to meet commercial location criteria. And the proposed amendment would allow for additional density, including the RM12, the RM16, the RM18, and RM24 zoning districts. Next, as usually, we have submitted the request to our partner agencies for their review and input. The school board did provide comments stating that Gori Elementary, Wilson Middle, and Plant High Schools are all over capacity. Please note that these comments are an analysis for adequate facilities only and is not a determination of school concurrency. A school concurrency review will be issued prior to preliminary plat or site plan approval. All other agencies stated no concerns with the request. Planning Commission staff reviewed the comprehensive plan and found that the proposed map amendment request for the residential 35, future land use category, would be consistent with the adopted policy guidance within the comprehensive plan. First, the comprehensive plan is supportive of compatible infill development, especially within central Tampa neighborhoods that are close to employment and transit opportunities. You've seen by the photos that there is already a predominance of single-family attached townhome development that has been developed under the R35, so Planning Commission staff has deemed it compatible infill development. Also, the comprehensive plan seeks to protect overall neighborhood context and character by ensuring new development is similar in form and scale to existing development found within the surrounding area. Residential 35 and residential 20 planned parcels are located directly adjacent to the subject site. This plan amendment would provide for a compatible development pattern to that existing pattern that's already out there. And finally, the comprehensive plan seeks to promote a wide range of housing types within central city neighborhoods so as to provide housing for a wide range of income level and family needs. So based on that, your Commission staff recommends that the proposed map amendment be found consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Imagine 2040 Tampa Comprehensive Plan. That concludes my presentation. I'm available if you have any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Haye. I assume there was no presentation from the applicant, so I will, oh, maybe not.
Yeah.
Is there one?
The applicant is on, I believe, yes.
Okay. Please go ahead with your presentation.
Good evening, Commissioners. Can you hear me? Am I all coming through okay?
Yes.
Steve McElhenney, I'm representing the applicant in this case, TACPA 20-34, 411 through 413 South Willow. And as the staff has pointed out, we're in the center of a very well-established townhouse and multifamily development area. And let me back up for a few minutes and go over what happened to this area, starting back in the late 1990s and early 2000. The neighborhood was wrought with older structures, failing utilities. The housing stock was in poor condition, and a number of developments came through for townhouses that enabled the alleyways and the properties to be rebuilt in a townhouse style development project. The staff has pointed out that, you know, we are surrounded, at least on the east and south sides, by R35, and we also are within the area where there's a fair amount of R20. We're requesting the R35 in order to accommodate a townhouse project on these parcels, and it is compatible. The staff has gone through all of the different criteria regarding the land use, the land use provisions that have found it consistent. It is in the central planning district. It does create the housing for the urban employment centers as is provided for in the comprehensive plan. It is within these transit areas. We're two blocks away from Community Commercial 35, and I think, as David's pointed out, we also have some heavier intensive land uses immediately to the north. The project is basically designed to complement the area and to promote the infill development on underutilized parcels. And we're committed to making this a nice project which provides housing for the various individuals coming into the area. And if you're not familiar with this area, what happened was the first set of townhouses that went in were approximately $150,000, and the land uses and the, and the single-family and some of the multifamily that was removed. Those projects have since been replaced. The utilities have been upgraded, sidewalks, alleys have been paved, the water systems have been improved, and we actually have drivable alleyways now that where you can be serviced for, for all the utilities. They used to be dumping grounds for trash and debris, mattresses, et cetera. The crime rate was extremely high, and we managed to, through these development programs, reclaim the neighborhood for the residents. Those townhouses that were $150,000, $160,000 15 years ago are now $400,000, $500,000. So we believe that these projects will turn this area around. They will help to stabilize the remaining underutilized parcels, and it is compatible, as the staff has pointed out, with a number of land use provisions and your comprehensive plan. It also promotes proximity of new buildings that are, that are in proximity to others that will help to foster additional strengthening of that neighborhood. So I would just like to say in conclusion that the staff has found it consistent. We worked with them for quite a while on these particular projects. We've explored a variety of options in here. We have reached out to various neighbors and discussed the project with them and explained that there's a difference between the rezoning portion and the comprehensive plan that's before you. So rezonings that follow, we'll be continuing to meet with the neighbors to discuss additional issues and concerns they may have, and we would, again, respectfully request your approval that the project is consistent with your policies, and I can name them, but you have them before you. 1.1, land use objective. 1.111. 1.2. 1.2.3. Land use objective. 2.1. 2.11. 2.1.2. 3.4. 3.5. 3.53. 9.8. 9.81. 9.83. Housing objectives. 1.3. We agree with the staff that this is a reasonable request, and we would request your approval.
Thank you, sir. All right. I will turn it over or ask our executive director there. We're going to go to the public comments section now if we have anyone signed up.
Yes, we sure do. Anika Verhein?
Yes, hi, I'm here.
Hi, yes, please go ahead.
Yeah, I live across the street from the...
Could you please state your name for the record?
Yes, hi, my name is Anika Verhein, and my husband and I, with two children, live across from the 502 South Orleans parcel. And if you are familiar with the neighborhood, it was not shown on the pictures that were shown just a minute ago, but there are four very nice, single-family homes across from this planned parcel, and we have lived here for over 10 years, and we're very happy here. We raise our children here. Our infrastructure is not equipped to handle an increase in the density of the people. We have significant stormwater issues, flooding issues that we faced again last Sunday, unfortunately, when we had significant rain. And traffic, we have a lot of congestions on Willow, on Swan, and we see a lot of cars parked in the neighborhood. Most important, as a mom of two, and my neighbor has three little children here, and again, we are across from 502 South Orleans parcel, is with increase of traffic, it becomes unsafe for our children to play in our front yards, and they enjoy playing in the front yards a lot at the moment. And we have seen it now over the past two weeks that Willow, South Willow, was closed. South Orleans has turned into a highway, lots of traffic, people driving too fast. We have cars parked on the streets, so when the children are crossing the streets or any other pedestrian, the cars that are coming in won't easily see the pedestrians, right? And also, we have a lot of children here in this neighborhood that walk to Gori, that walk to Willow, and there are no crosscars on Willow. There are no traffic signs on Willow. So if we are changing this to a higher density with more cars, you know, I'm really concerned that we see similar accidents as that we're seeing on Beishaw currently. Lastly, this is an extension of Historic Hyde Park, which is bordered by the Crosstown, right? And we have beautiful houses here in the neighborhood. Personally, I feel putting another condo building up here really will take away of the charm of the neighborhood. The neighbors, I've talked with many, many people in my street and other streets, we feel that Hyde Park needs to stay very residential, family-oriented, and obviously, we are concerned also about, you know, the property value, and we pay a lot of taxes here, so I hope that our voice is being considered and is being heard.
Thank you for your comments. Was there anyone else signed up? Continuing down the list.
Yes, Kathy Walsh.
Yes. Can you hear me?
Hello, yes.
Hello. Hi, good evening. Thank you, everyone, for being here. I too live in the neighborhood. I live down, I live...
Could you please state your name for the record?
I'm sorry, Kathy Walsh.
Thank you.
Okay. I live just a little, a couple blocks east of the subject on Willow and Orleans, and I have been living in the, I'm a native of Tampa, in South Tampa, but I've lived in this particular location for four years. And in that four-year time, my concerns with development for the area is, as Anika just said, is traffic concerns, pedestrian safety, parking issues, school impact. I myself have given up riding my bike that I bought when I brought, when I came back to the area, bought a beautiful new bike, and we, I, my dog and I, going for bike rides, I was bopped twice by vehicles in the immediate area right there that didn't even slow down or care that I was knocked over or if I was injured or not. Again, walking, we have to be very careful because the cars parking on the street and lining the streets, especially on Willow, traffic can't see us and we can't see them until we get beyond the block of the vehicles lining the street, which a lot of times, people in the area can tell you, it's been a very dangerous situation for all of us. And we do have children in the area walking to school, and I so enjoy that they can do that. I would like to know, and as we move forward with our neighborhood, the improvement of the neighborhood I embrace, as long as we do proper traffic studies, has there been any traffic studies or infrastructure impact that the new development would change the area?
Ms. Walsh, this isn't a question and answers session. You can allow to give comments, yeah.
All right. Well, I would, I think it'd be wise that we saw a traffic study, pedestrian safety, and a crosswalks on Willow. And also, I think they need to think about the number of units they build. Where are we going to park these cars, and how are people going to get up and down the street? And that's where I'll leave my message tonight, and I thank you all for being here and for listening. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Next, we have Jan Roberts. I'm not sure if she logged in.
Jan Roberts has not checked in, so unless she is on the line right now, which I don't see her.
Okay. Then Batista Mordini?
And it's the same thing with Batista. They have not checked in unless they're on the line right now.
Okay, I thought I saw that name, but maybe not. Okay. Then the next one is Alyssa Woodard.
Hi, this is Alyssa Woodard. For the record, can everyone hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Hi, I live at 408 South Willow Ave., which is directly across from the new development, and I would like to adamantly oppose the rezoning, not in line with the current Spanish Creek Historic Hyde Park neighborhood and our current and future vision. Right now, it is zoned for R10, and I think we should restach that zoning as a three-story townhome would be beautiful, but progressing to something that can have 18 units, up to eight stories tall, is just ludicrous and not in line with our current area. I do believe this will destroy the integrity of our neighborhood. You know, when those original townhomes that they're currently referencing, they were built in the 80s and 90s, when the neighborhood looked very different than it is today, and it was less desirable. But now that the neighborhood has grown, it is not fitting with the current vision. You know, our neighborhood has single-family homes, and currently, there's five remaining on the side that were not shown in photos, but are an important part of this neighborhood. And I was disappointed with the application that the staff supported this because they don't believe it's consistent with the direction and development. I'd like to also echo the public safety concern with parking and density, and if we are having 18 units, that's up to 36 more cars that we're now going to have to place within Willow and the adjacent streets. And so I just, you know, want to reiterate that I do adamantly oppose the rezoning, and I think within the R10, there is development potential to make a beautiful townhome, if that is what is wanted by the developers, but you don't need to rezone to R35 in order to do that. And so I hope you take, you know, myself, as someone who lives across the street, and, you know, hope to raise a family in this area, as well as others, into consideration. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Chairman, I do believe we actually do have Batista on the line. He's muted currently. I'm going to go ahead and unmute him. Batista, can you hear us? Batista Mordini, if you're on the line? You are unmuted. Can you hear us? I don't believe he's responding. We should be able to hear him, but...
All right. Do we want to move forward, and maybe you can keep working with them to try and get them? Is there anyone else signed up?
There is no one else signed up, but staff did mention that the city staff is online, and I don't know if they had anything they wanted to say.
All right.
Yes, this is Frank Hall with the city staff. At this moment, we have, we are in agreement with council staff. We believe that the proposed zoning is coherent and does match the existing zoning and would fit in well with the long-term plan based on the city and county's proposals. We have no objection at this time.
Thank you. All right, back to Batista. Any further luck there? Are we just letting go of that one?
Batista, can you hear us? You're unmuted currently. We're not getting any response from you.
All right, we'll move along then. Okay, no one else signed up for public comment? Then I will allow the applicant to make a rebuttal, three minutes.
Thank you, Commissioners. Steve McElhenney back for the applicant. I think that there's a little confusion here regarding rezoning versus the land use that's being requested. The land use, obviously, will enable...
I don't believe he's responding. We should be able to hear him, but.
All right. Do we want to move forward and maybe you can keep working with them to try and get them? Is there anyone else signed up?
There is no one else signed up, but staff did mention that the city staff is online, and I don't know if they had anything they wanted to say.
All right.
Yes, this is Frank Hall with the city staff. At this moment, we have, we are in agreement with council staff. We believe that the proposed zoning is coherent and does match the existing zoning and would fit in well with the long-term plan based on the city and county's proposals. We have no objection at this time.
Thank you. All right, back to Batista. Any further luck there? Are we just letting go of that one?
Batista, can you hear us? You're unmuted currently. We're not getting any response.
All right, we'll move along then. Okay, no one else signed up for public comment. Then I will allow the applicant to make a rebuttal. Three minutes.
Thank you, Commissioners. Steve McColini back for the applicant. I think that there's a little confusion here regarding rezoning versus the land use that's being requested. The land use, obviously, will enable us to seek the rezoning, at which many of these issues that they have brought up, including traffic and stormwater, will be addressed. And the city staff is very diligent in making sure those requirements are met. I did want to point out that this is one of the few neighborhoods in the entire city that only has parking permits for residents. So you don't have the intrusion of parking from the commercial district along Howard or further north from Platt Street. We believe that we have a reasonable project planned for this. We do need the R-35, and we're not trying to overbuild that. And again, the planning commission staff, as well as the city staff, will be ensuring that whatever comes forward will be compatible with the neighborhood. There is a mix of uses in here, and they range from townhouses to some single-family and some multifamily. So again, we agree with the city staff. We agree with the county planning commission staff that it is compatible. We're not introducing a new land use that would be different than anything else. It's adjacent to R-35 on the east and on the south, and in close proximity to even higher land uses to the north and to the west. So we believe that this is an appropriate designation and an appropriate request for this location. And we will obviously be sensitive moving forward should the commission be in support of this, going back to city council and making sure that whatever is planned does not create, does not create an improper use or an improper impact on the area. And just in summary, it is in the urban central planning district. It does provide the housing that's necessary. It does promote compatible land uses. It is an efficient use of the area for infill. And we would respectfully request your approval in moving this forward to the city council. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. All right. With that, I will open it up to the commissioners for any comments, questions, or discussions any of you may have. Let me check on the WebEx to see if I see anyone. Commissioner Cardenas, yes, please go ahead.
You know, it's interesting. When I saw this one come up, the first thing that I was thinking of was the same thing, parking, traffic, stuff like that. And yeah, at first, I guess the reason I'm commenting is to try to generate a little bit of back and forth. Because at first, that was the thought that I originally was feeling. And then, you know, as you look at it, you look at this area, it clearly is more of a unit area than it is more of a single-family area with all that. And at the same time, you know, we have a great area like Height Park Village. I mean, that needs to be supported by structures such as this and a little bit more density such as this. Can I get some thoughts from fellow commissioners on that? Because, you know, I started with one point of view, and as I looked into it and I heard staff reflect on it, I'm kind of in agreement with staff.
Commissioner Handy, please.
I realize this might be addressed during zoning, but if we could talk about what parking would be envisioned for this higher density. And just, and let me also just back up and remind me what the current density is versus the R-35 that's being requested, so I'll get a feel for what the increase is.
Hi, this is David Hay with your planning commission staff. I can address the density issue. Frank, probably from the city, can address the parking issue. But dealing with the density, currently, there's, can be, it can be considered, all three parcels can be considered, if you put them all together, five units, typically under that residential 10. Typically, what we've seen under residential 10 is single-family detached development. That's what's out there now. Under the RES 35, similar to what's to the south and to the east, typically what you see under, especially with this lotting pattern, you see townhome development. If we were dealing with a much larger parcel, like two acres or something, it was RES 35, I would probably advise you that you're typically more to see multifamily. But since there's so much parcelization here, it's typically townhomes.
Okay. And is there a limit? I think one of the, one of the community folks that spoke up was concerned about how many floors, how many stories would be going in in the neighborhood.
Well, typically, residential development is, and Frank may be able better to address this because this is more of a zoning question, but typically, it's up to 35 feet. They can go higher in some districts. But, and then, what was, it was another part of your question, I think.
No, that answered, I think that answered that part. Then I was, the other part was about the parking.
If I may, this is Frank Hall with the city again. David was correct. In this area, for this density, it's usually 35 feet. The applicant can apply for a design exception, but that's normally a more involved process. And, but generally speaking, 35 feet is considered the upper end of this type of density. When it comes to, when it comes to parking, I'm going to have to get back with you with a little bit more detail because this neighborhood, again, as has been mentioned a number of times, has had issues in the past with parking. And we are in the process of looking over our current zoning to determine how best to, or even how we could consider modifying that if that's even an option. So I still have to sit down with our zoning administrator and go over specifics for parking, but that's, we've been, we've been working on that. And I will get back to you with some additional information if you wish.
And Commissioner, this is David Hay again with your staff. Two things. To, Steve, the applicant, may be able to discuss what they have developed because they have worked on some of our townhome projects within that area. So he may be familiar with what the current code permits regarding parking. But regarding height, I know one of the citizens mentioned up to eight stories. That is from the land use description. That is a general description that talks about the RES 35 and RES 50 land use categories. It's just to give people an idea of what the maximum potential could be. I don't see that occurring at this site. Could not do an eight-story building there. That's probably more under that median-density residential 50 category under that land use description.
Correct.
Just to clarify that, yeah.
Commissioners, I can answer some of these questions if you'd like.
Yes, please go ahead.
An eight-story building would be completely incompatible in this area, as David has pointed out. The typical height in here is 35 feet. And I think going forward, our proposal is right at 33, 35 feet to the top of the roof. And every one of the units planned will have four parking spaces. So the city doesn't waive those requirements when you go through the rezoning portion of this plan. But we do need, we do need the density in order to provide for four units. That's what's on the agenda for the city to consider in the future. So this is not overbuilding. This is not, you know, a very intensive project, but it's identical to what's there already. And when we go through that rezoning review, it will absolutely have to be compatible with the neighborhood. Otherwise, neither the planning commission staff nor the city staff will be recommending favorably toward that at all. So we have those considerations. A lot of these, I don't know exactly where these individuals live, but I've been told that they live in areas that already have the R-35 designation. That may not, that may not be accurate for everybody, but it will be compatible. Your staff and the city staff will make sure that happens. And only, I think I pointed this out, only resident parking is allowed. And they have stickers that, you know, you have to be a resident. But we'll have, we'll have four parking spaces per unit in this proposed development. And again, this is part of a rezoning review and not necessarily the land use review. But we do respectfully request your approval so we can, we can get these units before the city council on the rezoning.
Thank you, sir. All right, are there any more? Did you have a question, Commissioner Marino? No, all right. Any more comments or question? Commissioner Dix, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a lot of respect for the trend and the desire to maximize the use of property for increased density. But, you know, there is a point at which it becomes too great, and density needs to be established in certain areas, not necessarily in, you know, traditional neighborhoods or historic neighborhoods, which this really is. If the property was built out to what has been proposed, not this proposal, but the adopted proposed land use of 10 units per acre, it would already be an increase in density. And some planning commission staff in the past thought that was the right number. And, you know, as you look at it right now, kind of the whole surrounding area is all single-family residential. And if it, if it goes to the proposed future land use of 10, excuse me, of 20, 20 and 10 will be on, 20 on the other side and 10 for the subject properties, it would be already significantly increasing the density. And I don't know whether it's really valid to request that you have a jump all the way to 35, particularly when you have so many people in that area who are desirous of keeping the residential neighborhood looking kind of like it is. I mean, there's been over 20 people who've, you know, submitted comments on this who really are adamantly opposed to it for one reason or another, whether it's how it's going to be transitioned in the neighborhood, how it's going to make things look, whether it's traffic. And who knows the answer to any of those? But you have so many people who have a strong opinion. And yet, so many times, when we are looking at these issues, nobody makes any comment at all. So I know that there's a tremendous interest by the community that's already there. And while I respect the applicant wanting to maximize the density, I mean, there's already the potential to increase the density with the proposed land use projected as it is. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Dix. Are there any more discussion or comments from the commissioners? I see. No one on the WebEx. I see no hands raised in the room. So was that a comment, Commissioner Marino? No. Okay. So I will close public comment right now, and I will open it up to the commissioners for a motion. Commissioner Marino?
I move that we find the proposed land use designation change for the City of Tampa CPA 2034 from residential 10 to residential 35 for the plan amendment site, consistent with the Imagine 2040 Tampa Comprehensive Plan and forward its recommendation to Tampa City Council.
Second.
A second.
I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Marino, a second by Commissioner Doughty. Are there any more discussion from the commissioners on this one? Not seeing anyone on the WebEx, not seeing anyone in here. I will ask the clerk to go ahead and do a roll call vote on this item.
Bernstein?
Yes.
Cardena?
Yes.
Dick?
No.
Doughty?
Yes.
Handy?
Yes.
Kres?
Yes.
Lenko?
Yes.
Moreno?
Yes.
Howell?
Yes.
Joseph?
Yes.
Motion carried, ninth one. Commissioner Dix voted no.
Thank you. All right, that looks like.
Thank you so much, Commissioners.
Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Hay, for the presentation. All right, that was the last item for this agenda. So with that, I will go ahead and adjourn this meeting, City of Tampa Public Hearing. And I will go ahead and do my opening up for the Hillsborough County Public Hearings. Bear with me a second here. All right. Welcome to the April 12, 2021 Public Hearing of the Planning Commission on Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan Amendments. We thank you for attending this meeting. Your comments and participation is encouraged. To minimize feedback in the audio, all participants in the meeting will be muted until it is their opportunity to speak. Planning commissioners should raise their hand or unmute themselves and turn on the camera to indicate they would like to speak. Please be sure to state your name at the beginning of your remarks for the benefit of the clerk. There will be an opportunity for members of the public to provide comments. When your name is called, you will be unmuted when it is your turn to speak. Please wait until the chair calls on you to begin speaking. State your name at the beginning of your comments and adhere to the time limits. If anyone has difficulties or is watching via HTV and would like to provide comments to be included in the record for the local government hearing, please email them to planner@plancom.org. For those of you who are not familiar with our process, the meeting will be conducted as follows. The agenda item will be introduced. Staff will give their presentation with a 15-minute time limit. The applicant will be given the opportunity to make a presentation with a 15-minute time limit. Following the presentations, members of the public may address the planning commission when recognized by the chairman. Public comment will be heard for three minutes per person. The applicant will be afforded a three-minute period for rebuttal or response. Planning commissioners will then ask questions. Public comment will be closed. Then upon a motion, a second, and discussion, a vote will be taken. This time, I'll ask the clerk to please call roll.
Bernstein?
Here.
Cardena?
Here.
Commissioner Cardena?
Here.
Dickerson?
This is Matt Pleasant, sitting here for Amber.
Dick?
Here.
Doughty?
Here.
Handy?
Here.
Kres?
Here.
Lenko?
Here.
Moreno?
Here.
Howell?
Here.
Rodriguez?
Here.
You have a corn, sir.
Thank you. First item on the agenda is 2A, HCCPA 20-08 Comprehensive Plan Text Amendment. And the presenter is Mr. Diego Guerra.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Diego Guerra, Planning Commission staff. This item is the Environmental Sustainability Section update, currently adopted in the Comprehensive Plan as the conservation and aquifer recharge element. This is a publicly initiated amendment. The Environmental Sustainability Section will fall under the Natural Open Space Chapter of the Comprehensive Plan update, as indicated on the graphics to the right. The coastal management and recreation open space sections will complete this chapter. The element, excuse me, the element includes language on natural resource management and houses the Hillsborough River Master Plan. Water resource language, formerly part of the element, were incorporated into the One Water Chapter, which was adopted late last fall. Additionally, the current element has minimal language on wildlife corridors, which we received concerns on during our outreach. We utilized a similar process to that of One Water in that we began collaborating with working group members early in the process. Members of the working group include representatives from the four divisions of the Environmental Protection Commission and various departments and divisions from Hillsborough County. The section also incorporates feedback from public and stakeholder groups in addition to local and regional agencies. Planning commissioners also reviewed and provided feedback on the section. This is a summary of the land use workshops in which the Board of County Commissioners provided policy direction that applies to the section update and was used as guidance during the process. Topics include the protection of elap land, increase of natural preserve acreage and protection of wildlife diversity, protection of the natural environment and surface waters, integration of the environmental protection into development regulations and conservation initiatives. Coupled with this policy direction provided by the Board of County Commissioners, we also implemented priorities provided by the various. also implemented priorities provided by the various county departments and divisions and EPC into the language. Important components of the existing plan were retained, updated, and modernized, with only 14% of the update consisting of new language. During the process, we also removed duplication and with water resources language being incorporated into One Water, into the One Water Chapter, the new goals, objectives, and policies were reduced from over 300 to 191. On this slide and the next is a summary of the goals and objectives, topic areas. Goal one discusses sufficient, reliable, clean energy. Goal two discusses industrial waste, which is under the purview of EPC, and the topic is required as to be part of the section per Florida statutes. Goal three is centered around the preservation, conservation, restoration, management of natural resources. Goal four is specific to the Cockroach Bay Aquatic Preserve. Goal five discusses general river policies, which also exist in the current plan. Also adopted in the current element are goals, objectives, and policies specific to the Alaphi and Little Manatee Rivers, which are duplicative, which consist of duplicative language with the exception of the specific river name. These policies are parsed down in order to, in order to address all rivers within the county under the general rivers goal, with the exception of the Hillsborough River. Policies specifically addressing the Hillsborough River make up Goal Six in the Hillsborough River Master Plan and per Chapter 86, 335 of Laws of Florida are incorporated into the comprehensive plan. We began our outreach early this year, which started with an article in the Plan Hillsborough Newsletter discussing the update. We also launched the project page specific to this update in late January and held a virtual public outreach event in February. To be transparent in the process, the project page housed various reference documents, which included the crosswalks, maps, and draft language. We also held separate and targeted outreach events for neighborhood associations, Realtor Association, Tampa Bay Builders Association, the environmental organizations, and agricultural community. The final version of the section, which is presented to you today, reflects this outreach and incorporates planning commissioners, stakeholder, and public feedback. During the regional review of the draft, which was distributed in early February, we received comments from the Tampa Bay Estuary, Tampa Bay Estuary Program, Tampa Bay Water, Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council, and EPC. Those comments are also included in your packet and incorporated into the final version. The section retains important components of the existing plan and are consistent with the goals of the Conservation Aquifer Recharge Element, Solid Waste Element, and overarching goals used to represent applicable objectives and policy language. As for what comes next, the Board of County Commissioners Transmittal Public Hearing will be held on the, later this month, on the evening of April 22nd. State and regional, state and regional agency review and comment period will occur during the months of May and early June, with a Board of County Commissioners Adoption Public Hearing scheduled for the 17th of June. Ladies and gentlemen, staff commends the Planning Commission find Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan Amendment 20 Tag 08, consistent with the future of Hillsborough Comprehensive Plan for unincorporated Hillsborough County, and forward this recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners. Commissioners, this concludes my presentation, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Do you have any public comments? Sign up for this one.
We do. I would also mention that the EPC staff, I think, is online. I don't know if you'd like to hear from staff before the public.
Did they have a presentation or want to make some comments?
I, I'm not sure. I just see, see a couple of their names on here, so I just wanted to check and see if they had anything they wanted to say.
Okay. Well, no one seems to be talking. Go ahead.
This is Andy Zogar with the Environmental Protection Commission, Legal Department. We don't have any presentation, and just let us know if you have any specific, specific questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
I hate to interrupt, but this is Janet Doherty from the EPC as well. I was just curious if there had been outreach to the Port Authority concerning hardening or the using, leaving shorelines without hardening.
Ma'am, we did send the, we did reach out to the Port Authority. However, regarding coastal hardening, that would be covered under the coastal management element, which is scheduled to be beginning the plan amendment process in, with the April cycle.
Okay, super. Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so then in terms of public comment, we did have Elizabeth Rogers. I don't know if she made it on the line.
I'm not seeing her. If Elizabeth Rogers is here, if you could unmute yourself, but I do not believe she has called in.
Okay. Then Kenneth Parker?
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, my name's Kenneth Parker. I serve as the Executive Director of the Florida Strawberry Growers Association, as well as the Vice Chair of the Hillsborough County Economic, or Agricultural Economic Development Council. We simply wanted to just let you know that the stakeholders, the ag stakeholders, want to publicly thank the staff for reaching out to us. And I know there were several. I think Sean, Melissa, and Diego, they all did a fantastic job. They listened to us, and they were willing to make the changes that would clarify language, and it was all to avoid unintended consequences. So again, we just want to say thank you, and we look forward to working with you in the future.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, next would be Adrian Muziel.
Adrian, Adrian, you're unmuted. Can you hear us? I believe Adrian may have just joined. Adrian, if we can't hear you, if you could hear us. Can you hear us, sir? Okay, Adrian, we can't, Adrian, can you hear us? I have you unmuted. Can you hear us? Adrian, we can't hear you. If you could back out of the meeting and rejoin, that will probably fix it. He should be rejoining in a second. Hopefully, we'll have his audio when he rejoins.
Do we want to go forward with the list? Was there anyone else, or is...
There is one more. I don't know, I don't see them on the participants list, but Michael McNeil, just, you can ask.
I believe Michael McNeil is signed up for B, Item B.
Oh. I apologize. You're right. Sorry.
And I don't, I don't believe he's on the, on, on the call anyway.
Okay. We'll give it another minute here or so. Has Adrian rejoined us just yet, or...
He has not rejoined just yet. I don't see his name on yet. I do know he joined late, once the meeting had started, so we weren't able to check his microphone beforehand. But I'm not seeing him back on just yet.
Well, should we move along, or... I guess we can do that. Can we go to the next one and come back? The next item?
Yeah, I, I think we could. Sure, that's, that's up to you all.
I mean, I can hold my place at public comment. We kind of told him to hang up and try back, so...
I know.
I'd like to give him the opportunity to speak. He was here. There was a technical difficulty. I mean, I don't...
Yeah. Yeah, that would be fine, to move on to the next item.
Chairman, I do believe he's joining now, just so you know.
Okay. Yeah.
I just saw his name come up. I may just take one moment for him to... Adrian, can you hear us? If you could unmute yourself?
Yes, I can.
Excellent. We hear you now, Adrian.
Okay. I am on 2103. I have no comment on 2008.
Thank you, sir.
All right.
With that, then, since there is no more public comment on this item, I will open it up to the commissioners. Oh, actually, a three-minute rebuttal period. Mr. Guerra, if you'd like it.
No, sir, I have no rebuttal.
Okay. Thank you, sir. With that, I'll open it up to the commissioners for their comments, discussion, and questions on this item. Yes, yes, Commissioner Doughty, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I actually don't have any questions or whatever. I'd like to thank Diego and Sean for their, their efforts, and I'm glad to see some, some of the language that's in this that has come from, I've had some concerns and some desires for wildlife corridors and protections along those lines for quite some time now, and I'm glad to see that it's getting, getting into our comprehensive plan, and I will stand ready to make a motion if, when the time comes.
All right. Thank you. There any more comments from the commissioners on this one? Commissioner Moreno, Diego, no? I just wanted to, I, for myself, I'll echo Commissioner Doughty's sentiments. I know Sean and Diego have heard a lot from me throughout this process. Obviously, not into this last part of it, but that's because I think the team has done an excellent job of capturing everyone's ideas and input and sort of fleshing them out in a way that we could all live with, hopefully here. We'll see with the vote. So, good job, and I wanted to commend you guys and say thank you for the hard work. All right. And with that, if there's no more comments, I will, oh, Commissioner Lucas, please.
I'll just note that I, I think it's, it's quite exceptional to have support coming from the agricultural community for this sort of effort. So I think that really gives strong kudos to the staff involved on this.
Thank you. All right. Seeing no more lights on or hands raised. I will go ahead and close public comment and open it up to motions. Commissioner Doughty?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to move that the Planning Commission find the proposed text change for Hillsborough County CPA 20-08 consistent with the future of Hillsborough Comprehensive Plan and forward the recommendation to the BOCC.
Second.
All right. That's a motion by Commissioner Doughty of consistency, a second by Commissioner Moreno. Is there any more discussion amongst the commissioners? Not seeing, Commissioner Bernstein, did you have any comments, or are you just prepared to okay? Not seeing any more discussion, I will go ahead and ask the clerk to call vote on this one, roll call vote.
Yes.
Cardina?
Yes.
Dick?
Yes.
Doughty?
Yes.
Handy?
Yes.
Kres?
Yes.
Lenko?
Yes.
Moreno?
Yes.
Howell?
Yes.
Joseph?
Yes.
Motion carried, ten to zero.
Thank you. Our next item up is 2B, HCCPA 20-17. It's a future land use map amendment, and the presenter is Tony Garcia.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hello, commissioners. Good to see you all again. Tony Garcia, Planning Commission staff. The item before you is HCCPA 20-17, located at Bloomingdale Avenue and Old Twig Lane. Next slide, please. The site is located in the central Hillsborough area and is also within the urban service area. More specifically, it is within the boundaries of the Brandon Community Plan. Next slide, please. This is a privately initiated map amendment. It is approximately 27 acres in size. It consists of 11 parcels. Since it is in excess of 10 acres, this will be subject to state and region review. So, once it passes this body, it will go to the BOCC for transmittal consideration, and then if that is approved, it would come back for adoption sometime in the summer. Next slide, oh, wait, let me go ahead before I go to next slide. Can we go back? Thank you. I wanted to provide you a little bit of context on this aerial to begin with. The site is located just to the northwest quadrant of the intersection of Providence and Bloomingdale. Bloomingdale is a major arterial road. Providence is a major collector. Gorton Lake to the left is a local, and then you're going to go a little bit further to the left. You can see on the bottom left-hand corner where it says the diagonal road there, that's Highway 301, which is further to the west. The aerial can show you, it pretty much depicts that this is a, this is, has a variety of different residential uses in the area directly to the north of the site, to the northwest, our single-family detached residences and further to the north as well. There is an old, a couple of old enclaves directly to the northeast of the site that have been there for some time. There is a lot of single-family to the south. And to the west of Gorton Lake Road, you'll see that there are, there are townhomes in addition to what you can't see in the aerial, because I don't have a greater scale, there are apartments to the west of that. There are also a variety of different neighborhood serving and general commercial uses in the area. To the west of the site, to the west of Gorton Lake, there is a Super Target on the north side of Blooming, Bloomingdale, to the west of Gorton Lake Road. And to the south of Bloomingdale Avenue, west of Gorton Lake, as it goes further to the south, is a Home Depot. Further to the east is one where to go to the east, along Bloomingdale Drive, closer to Providence Road, one would find, there is a Target on that north, on that south, southwest corner of that intersection of Bloomingdale and Providence. There is a Walmart there, and to the east of that is the Winthrop Town Center. So that's pretty much what I have for you as far as context. As I said before, on Bloomingdale, you're going to find a lot of general commercial and neighborhood serving commercial uses, mainly due to the, the roadway network and the availability of some lands in this area. This is located, as far as it can, as far as it's concerned with the Brandon Community Plan, this is, this particular part, these parcel assemblies located in the urban general area of the districts within the Brandon Community Plan. I'm going to show you now, if you go to the next slide, please. I'm going to show you the future land use categories over here. You can see that, that light color, almost a beige-y color, is the suburban mixed-use six category. The lighter brown color to the west of the subject site in question is also a residential 16 land use category, which is what the applicant is requesting for this particular site. Also, to the south part of Bloomingdale, you will also see a project that has a residential 16 land use category. And to the west, as one goes closer to Highway 301, one will see the higher land use categories of urban mixed-use 20 and community mixed-use 12. This particular segment, again, as I told you, there's a finite amount of properties that are left here that are still in an undeveloped state, that are ripe for infill development. This is on the very terminus and the edge of the urban general district. One can see a clear demarcation of intensity as one goes east of Providence Road, because that land use category then becomes residential six, as one can see. So the opportunities for increases in the future, potentially for increased residential development or increased density, goes down as one goes further to the east from Providence. Next slide, please. This is a, another future land use map for you to take, take a look at, and a little bit of a greater scale. You can see up in the top left-hand corner, you will see, that's where Brandon Town Center is, and that's our highest land use category in the area, which is regional mixed-use 35. And then as one comes down from that, you can see the urban mixed-use 20 categories, and then of course, the community mixed-use 12. And then, of course, as I told you before, as one goes further to east from Providence, you'll see a, a reduction in intensity and density to the residential six land use category. Next slide, please. So, the request before you this evening is for this parcel assembly to go to the residential 16 land use category, which is, again, as I had told you previously, is what the land use is to the west. This was also the subject of a plan amendment approximately two years ago, also from SMU six to go to residential 16, which was approved by this board and subsequently by the Board of County Commissioners. Next slide, please. The impacts from SMU six to residential 16 are the following. Uh, the impacts, uh, from, uh, SMU six to residential 16 are the following. SMU six, or from a residential perspective, currently allows 162 dwelling units to the potential of 433 dwelling units under the residential 16. Uh, SMU six also allows a variety of other non-residential uses, uh, with greater potential. They do allow neighborhood commercial, which allows 175,000 square feet or a .5 AO FAR, whichever is less intense. This is the same, uh, that's allowed under the residential 16 land use category. However, there is a departure under the SMU six where there are other uses that are more intensive that are allowed under the current SMU six, which are office, mixed-use, multipurpose and also research corporate park at a .35 FAR, which under this acreage of 27.07 acres allows a potential for, uh, a total square footage in excess of 412,000 square feet. This also allows a potential for light industrial uses at a .50 FAR, which is, uh, uh, just under 590,000 square feet. Uh, next slide, please. Here are some, uh, pictures of the surrounding area. No, I did not post, uh, the sign, Mr. Chairman, over here for wishful thinking in the land of COVID. Um, but, uh, it just seems to be, uh, the kind of appropriate thing, I guess, to see, uh, in the circumstances that we're working in. Uh, this is, uh, part of the subject site. This is the north face of Bloomingdale and as you can see, this is mostly undeveloped land. Uh, next, uh, slide, please. This is looking easterly, uh, on Bloomingdale. Uh, you cannot see it in the distance, but, uh, this is where on the south face of this road, uh, you would see, which is up to, to the right, is the south face of Bloomingdale. One can, there is a Brandon, uh, shopping center is down there, which contains the Walmart that we had talked about and of course, a little bit further down where the light is, that's where, uh, the Winthrop Town Center would be. Next slide, please. Again, this is another, uh, picture depicting the site, which is mostly, uh, undeveloped land at this point in time and some scattered single-family homes on, uh, large lots. Next slide, please. This is, uh, one of the three, there's three small water bodies on the site and this is one of the roads, uh, that leads into the area. As you can see, it's mostly undeveloped land. Uh, next slide, please. Another picture, uh, showing the current character of the subject site. Next slide, please. This is on the eastern terminus of where, uh, the project would end. This is Hancock Tire and Auto, which is adjacent to the site. Uh, next slide, please. This is another, uh, neighborhood serving or general commercial use that would be on the north face of, uh, Bloomingdale. Next slide, please. This is extra space storage, which is directly adjacent to the property on the western side. Uh, this was, uh, approved several years ago just, uh, through the rezoning. This is one of the uses that would be allowed under the SMU six category. Uh, next slide, please. This is across the street on the south side of Bloomingdale. This is the St. Andrews Anglican, Anglican Church and, uh, it represents quite a bit of acreage on the south side of, uh, Bloomingdale Avenue. Uh, next slide, please. Regarding agency comments, there were no objections from any of the reviewing agencies. Uh, this does not exceed school capacity. We do have, and I apologize for this in advance, I do have a school capacity analysis. It's, uh, part of your backup materials, but that was done initially when the applicant came in at a residential 20 land use category and I was not able to change that out to get, uh, comments back from, uh, the, uh, school board under the much lower category. Uh, it had, uh, under the residential 20, which had originally been submitted, they were like at 101 capacity on one of the high schools, 101%, just, 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 just over. So with 100 units less, it will not exceed school capacity for, uh, any of the schools, uh, that would, that are in the area. But we did receive comments from EPC that there are wetlands on site and that's definitely obvious from the aerials. Uh, and, uh, those would be, uh, addressed, uh, uh, at some point in time as far as, uh, mitigating those particular wetlands, uh, when this site comes in for a rezoning. Next slide, please. Regarding consistency with the comprehensive plan, the site is consistent with the future land use elements, specifically objective 16 for neighborhood protection, uh, policy 16.1, 16.2 and 16.3, which deal with compatibility, neighborhood protection, uh, mitigation of impacts and, uh, limiting commercial development to neighborhood scale, requiring buffer areas and screening devices between unlike land uses and gradual transitions of intensities between different land uses. Uh, for the community design component, that's, uh, 5.0, which deals with neighborhood level design, again, dealing with compatibility and design issues. 5.1 compatibility, again. Uh, goal 12, objective 12.1 and, um, uh, policy 12.1.4. And also the livable communities element, Brandon Community Plan Goal 1 and Goal 6. Uh, next slide, please. So based on these findings of fact, Planning Commission staff recommends that HCCPA 2017 be found consistent with the future of Hillsborough Comprehensive Plan and forward that recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners for adoption consideration. That concludes my presentation and, uh, I will be available for any comments should you have them. Uh, the applicant does have representation today and I believe that they are prepared to make, uh, a presentation of the room.
All right, yes, with the applicant, please go ahead.
Good evening, my name is Kami Corbett. I'm with the law firm of Hill Ward and Henderson, representing the applicant's second wave development. Thank you, Tony, I think you did a fantastic job with your presentation outlining how this plan amendment is both compatible with the surrounding area and consistent with the comprehensive plan. We do have a supplemental planning, uh, presentation that our planner, Alexis Crespo, will provide and she will be followed by Steve Henry to do address some transportation issues and then I will make some closing remarks. And at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Alexis.
Uh, thank you, Kami. After the record, Alexis Crespo, I'm a certified planner with Waldrop Engineering, representing the applicant. Uh, next slide. Um, and I'll just echo Kami's comments and, and thank staff for their thorough presentation. I know the Planning Commission has a long, had a long day, so I'll be as brief as possible and not, and not reiterate too many of the points that Tony, uh, made. Uh, the team is here this evening, including the developer, Mark Sempler, with Second Wave Development. Uh, Jeremy Couch is the project civil engineer with Tampa Civil Engineering. And as Kami noted, Steve Henry will be speaking on transportation. Next slide. Tony has, uh, very eloquently walked you through the subject property's location. It's an infill, uh, project proposed on a major arterial roadway in the Brandon community. As he noted, this is within the adopted urban general character district in the Brandon, uh, community plan, which has been in place since 2010. Uh, the property is well-located within the urban service area and is really in a transitional, um, portion, uh, of Brandon along Bloomingdale Avenue where, um, as Tony said, uh, the remaining, uh, light industrial and some of the, um, single-family uses that are along that arterial road, roadway are ripe for redevelopment, um, in accordance with the comprehensive plan and community planning efforts, uh, in the area. Next slide. Uh, Tony's walked you through these surrounding uses. I'll just want to note, um, certainly the, the character transitions to residential as you get away from the, the Bloomingdale Avenue, um, arterial frontage. In terms of our immediate surrounding uses, you're starting to see that transition where redevelopment is fulfilling the intent of the comprehensive plan to locate higher densities along these arterial corridors that could support multimodal transportation, rapid transit and improvements, uh, to getting people out of their cars and into, uh, better options. So we see that in the, um, uh, apartments that were approved, um, just 300 feet to the west of the site, as Tony mentioned, through a comprehensive plan amendment, um, approved approximately two years ago. And then along the frontage, um, I do have some animation on this slide. I don't know if it's possible to click through some of those. Thank you. We have Mariposa to our north, which is, uh, single-family residential. We have townhome development as well as, uh, single-family, uh, to the northeast and east of the property. Then as you move along the frontage, we do have those light industrial commercial uses. And as you move to the west, we have, uh, mini warehouse and then the, um, approved multifamily project at 16 use break, or known as Integra, which is currently under development. Uh, next slide. The request before you today is, is to amend the future land use map from MSU six to residential 16. Uh, we are requesting a maximum density or unit count of 472 units through our companion, uh, plan development rezoning application, which has been submitted to Hillsborough County. This would allow for, uh, some bonus density achieved through onsite affordable housing targeted at the workforce or 80% of the area median income households. So that's also a significant benefit of this project and all, something that's highly demanded, um, in the Tampa Bay area. The remaining units would be market rate. And as Tony noted, this would allow for higher density infill in a location targeted for growth. Uh, this would be the second amendment you've seen in the immediate area where this type of infill being developed, infill redevelopment is being supported. And as Tony noted as well, um, the SMU six allows for more intensive uses that would be less compatible with the neighbors than what we are proposing in terms of that, uh, 589,000 square feet of light industrial that could be developed, uh, per the current comprehensive plan category, as well as, um, intensive retail uses that could be developed at very high intensities and certainly generate, uh, much more in terms of vehicle trips, uh, to the site. Next slide. Um, you can advance through this as well as the next slide, which demonstrates our proposed change. As noted, there is the RES 20 just 300 feet to our west, uh, recently adopted. Uh, if you push the animation, there'll be a asterisk denoting the subject property. This slide is, oh, go back. Um, this slide is the adopted, uh, characters, character districts map. Um, you can see we are located in the urban general light brown shading and it does extend, uh, past Providence Road. So I would, I wouldn't say we're on the extreme edge of that. We are well-located, um, within that, uh, character district, which specifically states in the adopted plan, allows for multifamily housing up to five stories high, which is, uh, more, uh, dense than what we are requesting, uh, through our community. Next slide. Uh, while, uh, this study is not adopted, it's certainly important to point out some of the good planning work that's been done by the county over the past several years, specifically the Brandon corridors mixed-use pilot project. Um, this is where the county is really looking at the linkage between land use, the need for higher, uh, higher densities to support multimodal transportation, uh, opportunities and, um, this plan looked specifically at this, uh, section of Bloomingdale Avenue and targeted for higher density redevelopment, uh, based on that existing linkage pattern. And this was ultimately supported by the MPO and Planning Commission. Next slide. Um, this is one of the maps that was incorporated into that pilot project. If you advance the slide, the property is denoted in that high-intensity suburban, uh, category, which is, uh, very in line with what is being proposed through this RES 20, uh, future land use map change. Next slide. Uh, we typically, uh, don't want to delve too far into the details when we're looking at translating a comprehensive plan amendment. We want to look at the infrastructure, the land use pattern. But, um, because this is infill and because we do have residential to our north, we wanted to share with the Planning Commission, um, that we are, are working with the neighbors. We are working on the design of the site to push the buildings as far south as possible to provide for enhanced landscape buffering, um, to preserve all the, uh, onsite wetlands in entirety in order to make a good project that is compatible, uh, with the neighborhood while at the same time achieving the intent of the comprehensive plan, uh, to direct new growth to these urban areas. Next slide. Just to summarize some of the, um, key compatibility items that we are incorporating into the PD. Um, we have, uh, over 300 feet of separation between our buildings and, uh, homes within Mariposa to our north. We are incorporating conditions into the PD, addressing lighting, enhanced buffering, uh, fencing along property lines, um, that we've vetted with our neighbors, um, in order to make a good project. And we've also located the recreational amenity and sales office components of the project, uh, near Bloomingdale and away from our residential neighbors. So just a few items to address, uh, compatibility and consistency with the comprehensive plan, uh, policies, uh, related to that. Uh, next slide. In terms of infrastructure, as, um, Tony noted, we've, um, had review by the various agencies. Water and sewers available by the county to serve the project. They'll meet, uh, minimum currency requirements. Uh, we are well-served by transit in the area, um, and the, uh, trip, uh, trips produced by the proposed RES 16, uh, map amendment will be less than what could be developed under SMU six today, which Steve's going to touch on in a moment. Next slide. Uh, before I turn it over to Steve, just in terms of the transit, it's, again, there's the important linkage between multimodal transportation and map amendments such as this. Uh, the site is currently, uh, well-served by transit and there's, uh, would be plans to improve that over time as more density gets, uh, into the area. But that includes a transit stop at Bloomingdale and Providence walking distance from the site. Uh, service to South Tampa, uh, regular service to downtown Tampa via the, uh, Town Center in Brandon, as well as a route to South County, uh, onward. With that, I will turn it to Steve to address slide 15 and 16.
Good evening, Steve Henry with Lenkis and Associates. Uh, just want to go through, what we have done here is looked at, uh, a number of different scenarios, but what would be allowed under the SMU six versus, uh, what we're proposing here under the RES 16. Um, on the left-hand side of the chart is the AM peak hour and on the right-hand side is the PM peak hour. The blue represents the SMU six, um, uh, alternatives and the orange represents what we're proposing. So the, the first one under the AM peak hour, what we looked at was 146, uh, multifamily dwelling units and about 41,000 square feet of retail. As you can see, in the AM peak hour, that would be about a 21% reduction for what we're proposing over what could be built in that scenario under the, um, SMU six. The second scenario we looked at was 175,000 square feet of retail. Uh, again, in the AM peak hour, that would be about a 9% reduction, uh, from what that would generate under the SMU six versus what we're proposing. The third alternative is the light industrial. Uh, and based on that, uh, you can see the, the blue would be 412 AM peak hour trips versus 144. It's a 65% reduction for what we're proposing, what could be built under the SMU six. And then the fourth category was 143,000 square feet of retail and 28,000 square feet of office. Again, you're looking at about a 28% reduction, uh, in traffic for what we're proposing that what could be built under the SMU six. In the PM peak hour, uh, same scenarios, uh, the first one's about a 33% reduction. The second scenario, which was the retail, that's a 67% reduction. Uh, the fourth one, which is the industrial, is a 51% reduction. And then the final one, which is the retail office, uh, combination, we would be about a 64% reduction. So overall, the, this proposal that's for you today would have a significant decrease in traffic over various scenarios that could be developed on the property under the SMU six. That concludes my presentation, unless you've got any questions.
I'll just take it back for our closing, um, two slides. Thank you. So, um, the comprehensive plan consistency that Tony addressed, we are in agreement with your staff that the proposed amendment to RES 16 will direct growth to urban areas. It's achieving the intent of your policies relating to minimum densities and, um, clustering new growth in appropriate areas of the county. We will fully address neighborhood protection and compatibility, uh, policies in both the future land use element as well as in the Brandon Community Plan through our, uh, plan development rezon and sensitive site design discussed earlier. Uh, the, uh, site provides for, uh, environmental protection through preservation of onsite wetlands and we are consistent with that, uh, urban general characteristic, character district in the Brandon community plan. Next slide. So to conclude, um, your staff has found this consistent with the comprehensive plan. Um, we will continue to work with the neighbors to address compatibility. This will provide for, uh, infill development in an appropriate location based on the county's, uh, plan in place for the area and will also provide for much-needed, uh, onsite affordable housing for the workforce. Um, and with that, I'll turn it back to Kami for, um, closing comments.
Thank you, Alexis. As you just heard, this area has been planned for intensification or increased residential density since the Brandon Community Plan, which was probably more than a decade ago. Uh, the county has, is woefully behind on its update to its comprehensive plan. They haven't had an update since 2008. Um, that, that is only- That is almost twice as long as what the state used to require in terms of plan updates. And so this privately initiated plan amendment allows us the opportunity to capture the vision of the branded character districts and also to implement some of the recommendations by the only joint land use study that's been done with the planning commission and the NPO with both transit and land use in mind. And this presents that opportunity. And we are here to answer any questions, should you have any, and I'll save any other time we have for rebuttal.
Thank you. Did we have anyone sign up for this one?
We do. I don't know if Michael McNeil has ever called in.
I am not seeing him.
Okay. Jane Caldera?
She's with the applicant team. She's here for questions, as is Jeremy Cox, just for clarification.
Okay, great. Sean Wilson?
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Good evening. This is Sean Wilson, president of Blue Sky Communities, 5300 West Cypress Street, Tampa, Florida. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair and members of the commission, members of the staff. I want to assure you that there can be nice affordable housing. This is a great location for it. I'm hearing an echo, I'm sorry. And I do not have any other thing on around here. Okay, I'm just going to continue. This is a good location for affordable housing. It's near transit. You heard that there's not that many properties available. And this is a great way to capture a little piece of property for affordable housing in an area that really needs it. There's a lot of retail jobs. This is, this is a really great opportunity for the county to further its own public policy on, on affordable housing in developing areas. Blue Sky Communities can assure you that, that the affordable housing will be well-built and well-managed. We've got three examples in the Brandon area. One, we just had a ribbon cutting on Friday. That's, it's, all of our developments are strongly supported by Hillsborough County and we expect that this one will be too eventually. Not only do we build well, we manage well. Like I said, we have an affiliated property management company that has managed affordable housing for decades in the Tampa Bay region. And this is, this furthers your policy and, and it really is a benefit to the neighborhood. So I support this request. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Was there anyone else?
I'm not sure if Sean Cox is with the applicant or a public comment.
No, he's not.
Okay, so Sean Cox.
Yes, good afternoon. My name is Sean Cox. I'm attorney here in Brandon and as of about two o'clock today, I was contacted by Hancock Tire and Auto, which is located on 10922 Bloomingdale Avenue to lodge an objection here this afternoon. And I promise, famous last words for a lawyer, I will be brief simply for the fact I will keep the comments short and direct. And also I've had very limited time to prepare an objection and present data. But what I would like to do is draw everyone's attention to Planning and Growth Management Department, specifically the plan use of this back all the way in December of 2005, specifically December 8th, 2005, indicated that the portions of Bloomingdale Avenue and Providence that issue here were quote, "currently operating" and a quote, "an unacceptable level of service." Now, withstanding the very articulate and, and well-polished presentation, I don't think we saw any data information that would indicate that the current operating state of Bloomingdale Avenue or Providence had been diminished or lessened over this course of time. It's approximately 15 years. One of the staff analysis in 2005 found in relation to this specific plan development was quote, "the safety issues arising because of traffic and congestion and also the difficulty with the number of ingresses and egresses here on Bloomingdale Avenue." The proposed change from SMU six to RES 16 is certainly going to create more capacity on Bloomingdale. It's not going to lessen any type of capacity or access to Bloomingdale as it's currently proposed. Again, in summary, on behalf of Hancock Tire and Auto, certainly Hancock's not opposed to a development or even infill build out, which will benefit my client, just as it's purposely and currently proposed to change in the capacity to approximately, let me give you the exact units, 433 total dwelling units will be unacceptable and will not lighten the congestion and the traffic and the other safety concerns that we have on Bloomingdale Avenue. Again, this is attorney Sean Cox on behalf of Hancock Tire and Auto over at 10922 Bloomingdale Avenue. Thank you for your time and your consideration this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Cox. Was there anyone else signed up for the public comment? No?
No, sir.
All right, well, I will turn it back over to the applicant then for a three-minute rebuttal.
Sure, Kami Corbett again for the applicant. I'd just like to note that as you, planning commission, I think you're all aware, but the Hillsborough County no longer has transportation from currency. So some of that information is outdated, but I would like to ask Steve Henry to address the level of service. We have done some analysis on that issue and I'd like him to speak to that if we could.
Sure, if you could pull up the PowerPoint. We do have a slide that shows the level of service. Can we pull up the PowerPoint? Is that possible? 20, oh, sorry, sorry, 19, sorry. Got to change something. So what we have done is we've gone out and done, actually, these are three-day machine counts on Bloomingdale Avenue, right adjacent to the site. These were actually done this year in documenting the traffic. And in fact, we've also, also, we have done counts previously prior to COVID, the same section, same counts, and documented that these counts are very comparable to what was pre-COVID out there. So from that standpoint, but what you'll see on this graphic, it shows every hour of the day, the blue shows the eastbound traffic, the orange shows the westbound traffic. The capacity, the peak direction capacity for Bloomingdale Avenue is 1,800 vehicles per hour. As you can see, there are two hours of the day in which the, the capacity of Bloomingdale Avenue, based on the generalized capacities, are slightly over the capacity. But you've got the other 22 hours of the day in which there is sufficient capacity on Bloomingdale Avenue for it to function adequately. In fact, if you go out there and drive it, you'll see that on every hour and even the peak hour, you've only got one direction that is slightly over capacity. Our impact on the overall project, on the capacity of Bloomingdale is minimal. As we had indicated in my presentation, what we're proposing here is a significant reduction in what could be developed on the property and the amount of traffic that that could develop. In addition, it indicated the access spacing. We will meet the Hillsborough County access management spacing criteria for the project. This project is proposing two accesses to Bloomingdale Avenue that will meet the spacing criteria. So from that standpoint, you know, this impact from a traffic standpoint is a significant I'll turn it back over to Ms. Corbett.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you, commissioners, again. The issue that before, is before you today is whether or not the change to residential 16 from SMU six is compatible with the surrounding area and consistent with your comprehensive plan. And I think all of the evidence that you heard this evening supports a finding of consistency and we would respectfully request your approval this evening.
Thank you. All right, with that, I will turn it over to the commissioners. Does anybody have any questions or comments on this item? Commissioner Powell? Please, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Really great presentation. However, I actually was going to touch on some of the things that Mr. Cox brought up in his brief presentation. I, I have some serious concerns and questions as it relates to the, the traffic and looking at, you know, in my packet of information. Hold on here, it's on page 35, sorry. The, the studies that were, you know, provided to us from the applicant, none of these scenarios seem to actually detail out what the applicant is going to be doing with the site. And I understand that these studies are based on, you know, what certainly could be, you know, built out through SMU six, but the reality is that that's never going to be viable in this market, you know, ever again. No one's going to most likely build the retail, you know, center there in the middle of the road. It's just not how retail is developing in these days, especially with needs for daily needs and things like that, which are already at your main intersection point. So I don't foresee that ever being, you know, something that is viable there. So when I see these numbers and, you know, the proposed 432 units here is going to add 3,233 daily trips, based on what is currently there now, where I can't imagine that there's probably more than 100 daily trips with the existing uses that are currently in place, you know, with a few homes and things that are there. So I wish that we had some sort of better data from the applicant, and maybe this is just how things get presented to us, but I, in the future for staff, I think that we should at least have some sort of requirement so that we can see, you know, what's currently in place versus what something is actually going to go to, so that we truly know the real impact, you know, for future planning. I mean, I, I'm certainly torn at the moment just on this fact alone, because to me, it's almost like an admission. It's like you're not intelligent enough to, to look at the numbers. You're going to overlook it and it's just going to sound really good. So it's probably just going to pass by the average person, but you know, to me, this is, that's not the right way, you know, to do that. And I don't know if this particular traffic study, if it also takes into account the apartment community that is just to, just down the, the street that's currently under construction. I don't know if this traffic studies provided, you know, or factored in, you know, that traffic impact, because I live in Winthrop and I can tell you that the moment that you get onto Bloomingdale and you just try to make the left from Watson to head towards, you know, the site there, I mean, the minute that you get past, anyone gets past Providence, it's just like, you know, it's, it's speeds, speed zone. I mean, almost by the time you get to Hancock Tire, most people have already hit, you know, Mach two and they're really gunning it to try to make the light, so that way they don't have to be at the light for going to a lake. And so I just, I don't even, it's outside of my purview and how development services is going to handle the, you know, the in and out for the, the site. But man, if you're going to have the ability to, you know, have a, a left in and a left out, I mean, a left, left out and a, and a right out, that's going to be having to be able, having the ability to cut across Bloomingdale there, that's just going to be, you know, a nightmare. But again, I, I don't like the presentation of, of the data here, you know, because it, you know, again, it doesn't take into account what the actual, you know, uptick of, you know, the, the traffic is going to be there.
Thank you, Commissioner Powell. Was there anyone else who wanted to, questions or any comments? Not seeing any hands raised, not seeing any lights on in the room. I will go on ahead and close the public comment for this item and open it up to motions from the commissioners. Commissioner Doughty, yes?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to move that the commission find the proposed land use designation change for the plan amendment HCCPA 20-17, consistent with the future of Hillsborough Comprehensive Plan and forward it to the Board of County Commissioners.
All right, that's a motion for consistency by Commissioner Doughty, a second by Commissioner Moreno. Is there any more discussion from the commissioners on this item? Seeing, seeing none, I will go ahead and ask the clerk to do a roll call vote on this item.
Bernstein?
Yes.
Cardina? Dick?
Yes.
Doughty?
Yes.
Candy?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Lenko?
Yes.
Moreno?
Yes.
Powell?
No.
Joseph?
Yes.
Motion carried, nine to one. Commissioner Powell voted no.
Thank you. All right, thank you, Mr. Garcia, for the presentation. Thanks to the applicant for their time. And we will move on to our next item, 2C, HCCPA 21-02, future land use map amendment also, and this one will be presented by Jawan Haley.
Good evening, commissioners. Can you see my screen okay?
Yes.
Excellent, okay, I'll go ahead and move forward. Again, Jawan Haley, Planning Commission staff. This evening, I'll be presenting, I'm sorry, I'm trying a little bit of feedback. I don't know if anyone else can hear it.
You sound good to us.
Okay, I'll move forward then. I'll be presenting the staff findings and recommendations for the Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan Amendment 2102, located at Orient Road and Evans Brook Court. So here's the subject site, it's located in eastern Hillsborough County. So this is a privately initiated map amendment located on 3.29 acres. It is located within the urban service area within the limits of the East Lake Orient Park Community Plan. It is located just west of Orient Road. There is the Evans Brook Court roadway here, very small, but it, it is located just, just south of it, of, of the site. But to provide you with some context for the area, the major intersection to the south, this is Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard and the Orient Road intersection here. And further north, there's the East Halsey Street and Orient Road intersection. And just here to the northeast, this is the, these are the fairgrounds. So for the context for the currently adopted future land use, for, for the area to the north is Residential Six. To the east is RES Six. To the south, down here at the intersection, is Office Commercial 20. Immediately south of the site is Research Corporate Park. Of course, further down is also Research Corporate Park, I'm sorry, across the Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard. I do want to take some time to focus on this parcel. This was brought in and openly approved, this was the subject of Comp Plan Amendment 18-16. It did go from Research Corporate Park to Light Industrial Plan. This is also the proposed amendment change for the subject site that you see out here outlined. And the, the amendment did leave some of the Research Corporate Park open, I'm sorry, it maintained the Research Corp, the Research Corporate Park to the north here on the north portion of the site. So, so the, the subject site is currently designated Research Corporate Park and Residential Six on the future land use map. So here again, you have the surrounding area and this is just the proposed land use change here. It is Light Industrial Plan. So here you have the front of the subject site facing north. You can see the You can see the structure here, and that is the, immediately north of the site is the East Chelsea Baptist Church. So this church is located just north of the site, and so here, as we're panning east, you see further north, it's mostly residential lots, mostly residential development, residential homes located to the east, right across Orient Road. There is a daycare here, but the majority of the lots are residential. So here's another take of the lots across the street, and then we're looking towards the south. This is the Orient Road and Martin Luther King intersection. And this structure here is a convenience store called the Beverage Castle, but it is a light commercial use, and it's located immediately south of the subject site. So for potential impact, currently, the adopted land use categories for the site are Residential Six and Research Corporate Park. The maximum density currently is eighty dwelling units. The maximum intensity is one hundred and eighteen thousand eight hundred and nine square feet. The maximum floor area ratio for RCP is one, for Res Six is one hundred and seventy-five thousand square feet, or point two-five. So Residential Six is subject to commercial locational criteria, whereas RCP is not. So the proposed land use category, Light Industrial Plan, the maximum density, if approved, would be zero. Residential development is not allowed within LIP. The maximum intensity would be just over a hundred seven thousand square feet. The maximum SAR for LIP is point seven-five. Retail uses are subject to commercial locational criteria and industrial categories. I also just want to take a moment to point out that another impact of this would be, open storage would also be allowed in Light Industrial Plan, so I just wanted to make a note of, just make a note of that. So there were no objections from reviewing agencies. So for consistency review, of course, it is within the urban service area, it does fulfill the intent of Objective One and Policy one point four. It also satisfies the intent of the Neighborhood Protection and Compatibility Policies. I do want to take a moment and focus on this industrial development, Objective twenty-six and Policy twenty-six point seven. Industrial uses are required per twenty-six point seven to be site-controlled. So this ties back into these Neighborhood Protection Policies and Compatibility Policies concerning gradual transition of land uses, and when we're looking at nearby residential, this is very critical to remember that industrial types of uses must be site plan-controlled. The proposal is also consistent with the East Lake Orient Park Community Plan, the economic development policies of, this could promote business growth and economic opportunities, job opportunities in the area, and the East Lake Orient Park Community Plan does seek to promote these types of opportunities within the limits, so staff has also found the proposal consistent with the community plan. And with that, Planning Commission did find Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan Amendment twenty-one dash zero-two consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Future of Hillsborough Comprehensive Plan for unincorporated Hillsborough County, and of course, I'm available for any questions if you have them. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, there's no other presentations after that, are there?
There's an applicant.
Yeah, that's why I was double checking.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, all right. Please go ahead, Mr. Horner, I believe.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, good evening. I'm Michael Horner, fourteen five oh two, North Dale Mayberry Highway, representing the applicant, and now the property owner of this three-acre site, more or less. I know it's been a long day for you all since two P M., and there's another case following this one. I will be brief. Ms. Haley did a, I think, a very thorough job of assessing and going through the impact reviews of this case. I have read the report and the findings. We certainly agree with those findings of fact and conclusions. We believe, as Ms. Haley noted, this is an appropriate plan sector. We in fact are taking two plan sectors, Res Six along Orient Road, and the western track of RCP, Research Corporate Park, unifying those under Light Industrial Plan Development. I will note that we initially filed a concurrent plan development rezoning with a FLEX request. That FLEX request would have allowed the movement of that LIP line to our west, across our site, that would negate the need for a Comp Plan Amendment. We thought that that would preserve the opportunity for the existing RCP to stay while allowing the needs of my client to proceed for his truck storage facility. Unfortunately, it was determined that that would not further the intent of the future land use element policies by your staff, and they were gracious enough to allow us to put the PD rezoning in abeyance. That case number is RZ twenty-one dash oh oh three six. We have now bumped that plan development rezoning to May seventeenth, and we are proceeding with this Comp Plan Amendment first, and we are pleased that we were allowed to do that. We did want to work with staff, it was critical. My client did not want to have negative denial recommendations, so we filed a timely application of this Plan Amendment to LIP. The tract to the west that Ms. Haley referenced is owned and is going to be a rather large trucking facility, owned and operated by Penske. Penske has just completed their first building, I was out there last week. It is north of MLK. It's a rather substantial building, they will have substantial outside truck parking, more than a hundred vehicles, as well as servicing. That is our direct western use that abuts our western property. We do have the church to the northeast. That church physical building improvement is further away from our site, and that site is rather large, so we don't see any direct impact issues with that use. On the south side, this is part of an older PD, a remnant from nineteen ninety-two, that has a number of LIP uses in it and light industrial uses. I won't go through all those uses that are permitted. I did represent Redcap Plumbing on a parcel directly south of this tract, and that is their corporate headquarters for Redcap Plumbing with their service trucks and parking and warehouse that has access from MLK. So we believe this is an appropriate transition. My client, again, is Couvier Enterprises, who are a truck operating business. They have to have open storage. Open storage for truck parking is not an easy use to find. For that reason, they found this a year ago, and have been working diligently to make sure staff feels comfortable with this, and that's why we have filed both the concurrent PD rezoning with the site plan requirements that Ms. Haley just referenced, as well as the Comp Plan Amendment to LIP. We do have the support of both staffs, we have the support of all review agencies, we have no wetlands on-site, access will be to Orient Road. This has been the site commissioners of vagrancy and trespassing, it's been an ongoing nightmare for the prior owners, who happened to be Redcap Plumbing, who sold this property in December to the current owner, Couvier Enterprises. It involved a burning down of a structure where the vagrants actually hotwired, broke into a house, tried to hotwire a stove for heat, and the house burnt down. There've been mattresses, drug dealing. It's just been a very difficult property to maintain because it is isolated, it's surrounded by trees, and some light industrial uses, and does not have good lighting, security, or fencing. For that reason, my client went ahead on a good faith effort, filed both PD rezoning, also filed a concurrent Plan Amendment, and he also paid and closed for this property, knowing that he's placing all his full faith and confidence in the planning process, and of course, of my abilities to get this through for him. So we're all feeling a little bit of pressure. We thank you for your time. We do believe it's an appropriate use, we certainly will meet those transitional compatibility requirements that Jawan mentioned. Be happy to answer any questions, this will be a light impact use, no real high employee counts, no high traffic counts, relatively benign and passive, but a critical component for my client's trucking business. Thank you very much, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. All right, did we have anyone to sign up for this one?
We did not.
No public comment, all right. Then I will go ahead and, well, I guess, do I have to offer a rebuttal if there's no public comment?
I don't think so.
No, okay. All right, I'll open it up to the commissioners now for comments and questions, if they have any, and I am seeing none in the room. Commissioner Powell, you still have your hand raised, I don't know if that's a comment or if it's still from the last time. Just going to double check. All right, Commissioner Powell's gone, took his hand down. No hands in the room, seeing no hands online, I'll go ahead and close public comment on this item and open it up for motions from the commissioners. Commissioner Moreno?
I move that we find the proposed land designation, land use designation change for Hillsborough County Plan Amendment HCCPA twenty-one O two from Research Corporate Park and Residential Six to Light Industrial Plan, consistent with the Future of Hillsborough Comprehensive Plan for unincorporated Hillsborough County, and forward this recommendation to the Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners.
Second. Thank you, sir. It's a motion of consistency from Commissioner Moreno, a second from Commissioner Doughty. Is there any more discussion or conversation on this item? Seeing none and no raised hands online, I'll ask the clerk to do a roll call vote on this item.
Yes.
Cardina?
Yes.
Dick?
Yes.
Doughty?
Yes.
Handy?
Yes.
Kress?
Yes.
Lenko?
Yes.
Moreno?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Joseph?
Yes.
Motion carried, ten to zero.
Thank you. All right, now, thank you, Mr. Horner, and thank you, Ms. Haley, for the presentation and the information. Onto our last item, two D, HCCPA twenty-one dash O three, and the presenter will be Melissa Dickens.
Good evening, Commissioners. One moment while I share my screen. Are you all seeing the PowerPoint presentation on your end?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Commissioners, Melissa Dickens, Planning Commission Staff. This item is HCCPA twenty-one O three. It is a text amendment to the unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan. The amendment proposes to modify the wellhead resource protection areas map, and this is an action item, there is a resolution for your vote this evening. Before we delve into the amendment, I wanted to outline some context for the wellhead resource protection areas. Both the map and general policy language are adopted within the One Water chapter. The language can be found under Objective one point three of One Water. Wellhead resource protection areas are part of a comprehensive potable water protection strategy in Hillsborough County that also includes potable water wellfield protection areas, which are the areas around smaller wells, and surface water protection areas, which are designed to protect surface water supplies. The wellhead resource protection areas specifically protect a certain type of well, the public potable water supply wells. These are larger wells that have a permanent quantity of at least a hundred thousand gallons per day, and are connected to a public water system. And the primary way that the wellhead resource protection area is implemented within the regulatory framework is within the Land Development Code, specifically Section three point oh five, point oh oh of the LDC. The LDC regulates both Zone One and Zone Two prohibitions and restrictions within the wellhead resource protection area, and Zone Two has a greater number of prohibited and restricted activities. Some background on the amendment, this is a privately initiated amendment. The amendment would remove the public potable water supply well protection Zone Two from the area surrounding the Crystal Lakes Manor Wells in northwest Hillsborough County. The amendment would also remove the Crystal Lakes Manor Wells and the particle tracking from the map. I also want to note that the applicant provided a detailed scientific memorandum on the hydrogeology of the area, that is in your pocket on page sixty-eight. This is a map showing the general location of the proposed amendment within Hillsborough County. It is in northwest Hillsborough County, right around U S forty-one and Sunset Lane. And these two maps show a zoomed-in perspective on the current adopted map, and then what the map would look like if the amendment were to be adopted. So I want to point out a couple of things on this slide. You can see here, this green square is the Zone Two protection area. The wells themselves are these black dots, and then the particle tracking is depicted in this green circle flowing northward from the well. This red area, this larger red area, that is the Zone One protection area. And then the proposed map, you can see the removal of the wells, the particle tracking, and the Zone Two protection area. The Zone One protection area remains the same and in effect for this area. We did receive some updated information from our agency partners regarding the wells, and I wanted to share that information as part of the record. We did coordinate extensively with Hillsborough County, the Southwest Florida Water Management District, and Tampa Bay Water as part of the review of this amendment. The official comment letters, the emails, and other materials that we received are all included within your packet, they start on page twenty. And first, I wanted to point out that Crystal Lakes Manor, which is the subdivision that the wells originally served, that, excuse me, that is now served by Hillsborough County, they are a Hillsborough County Public Utilities customer. The wells are no longer used for potable supply purposes, we have received confirmation of that from both Tampa Bay Water and the Water Management District. One well was permanently plugged and abandoned by Tampa Bay Water in twenty fifteen. Some additional details about the methodology that Tampa Bay Water used to do this are included in your packet. The other well was transferred to the Water Management District, it's used as a monitoring well for their minimum flows and levels program, so they use it to monitor the groundwater levels within the aquifer, and that is what that well is used for. We also received confirmation from SWFMA that the well integrity, the well is strong, there's no issues with its integrity, and it will continue to be monitored and maintained regularly. SWFMA staff also visits the site as part of their monthly monitoring. And we did not receive any objections from Tampa Bay Water, the Water Management District, or Hillsborough County. In terms of impacts, the proposed amendment would remove the Zone Two protection area and the associated restrictions and prohibitions that are in the Land Development Code, it would retain the Zone One protection area and the restrictions and prohibitions associated with Zone One. I also want to point out that there is no change proposed to the protection areas for other smaller wells that are in the area, the wells that have the five-hundred-foot buffer that is implemented by the LDC and the potable water wellhead protect, excuse me, wellfield protection areas, and also DEP Chapter sixty-two dash five twenty-one. As I mentioned earlier, we coordinated extensively with our local and regional partners who work with Water Resources Management. We received comments from Tampa Bay Water, the Southwest Florida Water Management District, Hillsborough County Environmental Protection Commission, and the City of Plant City, and no objections were received. Tampa Bay Water and SWFMA provided additional details on the Crystal Lakes Manor Wells, some additional details about the abandonment process and groundwater protections. Staff examined a number of policies and objectives when looking at consistency related to this amendment. Uh, a few of them, a sample of them are up on your screen. The remainder are available in your packet. The majority of them come from the newly adopted One Water chapter. Um, we, we evaluated One Water Objective 1.3, which, uh, ensures that groundwater quality is protected. We also evaluated One Water Policy 3.1.4, which speaks to the importance of updating information and using best available data. One Water Objective 5.3 and Intergovernmental Coordination Element 1.1, specifically direct Planning Commission staff to coordinate with local, state and regional agency partners on water resources and best practices and was the impetus for much of our, uh, technical coordination. In terms of next steps, there is a BOCC public hearing scheduled for April 22nd. That is the transmittal hearing. Should the BOCC choose to transmit this amendment, it will then go to state and regional agency review and then come back June 17th for an adoption hearing, also in front of the Board of County Commissioners. And your staff's recommendation is to approve the resolution in your packet, finding HC 2103 consistent with the goals, objectives and policies of the future of Hillsborough Comprehensive Plan for unincorporated Hillsborough County and forward this recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners. This concludes my presentation. Um, I am available if there are any questions. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Dickens. Uh, was there a presentation by the applicant for this one or?
This is Cammy Corbett with the law firm of Hill Ward Henderson. I did submit a PowerPoint, but it's not necessary to bring it up. I think Melissa's slides really addressed all of the information I was going to share from you, so you can go ahead and take that down. We don't need to, need to go through that and I don't need to take your time to just repeat something that, uh, Melissa has already stated. Uh, this is really just a technical amendment. I mean, the, the purpose of the wellhead protection map is to map assets and locations where certain conditions exist. And there's no question, as you heard, there are no objection from any agencies, though the thing that entitled this area to, to Zone Two protection is that public potable water supply well. Those wells are no longer in use, uh, for potable water and therefore it's appropriate to remove them from this map because they no longer in use for that purpose and therefore they're no longer in ti- this area is no longer entitled to Zone Two protection. Um, so the, th- this really is not something that, it's really something that should be done. We have more accurate and reliable data now and I think the Planning Commission and Hillsborough County have an obligation to update this map to make sure that it has, uh, accurate information. And, uh, we would never have even filed this amendment if we didn't have the support from Tampa Bay Water, uh, the Water Management District and Hillsborough County Environmental. And we're here to answer any questions. Our hydrogeologist is here, uh, available to answer any questions, should you have any, if you've reviewed the report that's in the record, but, um, I would like to reserve any remaining time for rebuttal.
Thank you, Ms. Corbett, and thank you for considering our time. All right. Are there, yes, I know there's public comment on this item. Mr. Adrian, I believe.
Yes, Adrian Musical, Muziel.
Is he, is he still with us?
Adrian, I believe you're on the line. Can you hear us? Go ahead, Adrian.
Hi.
You're unmuted. Go ahead, sir.
All right, thank you. Uh, yes, this is Adrian Muziel. I'm an attorney that represents the Luthe Citizens Coalition and the Luthe Civic Association. And they've all, we have previously filed our opposition to this amendment. And, um, noting that this is, this is much more than just a technical matter to the people that live in this area, all of which are served by their own individual wells. Uh, perhaps if Zone One prohibited, uh, in-ground, uh, tanks, uh, they would have enough protection with respect to their concerns concerning something happening with respect to, uh, tanks and it damaging the water, uh, that the wells pump up. So they're very concerned about that possibility with the removal of, uh, this area from the Zone Two protections. They're very concerned about, um, the reduced property values by the result of, uh, losing the Zone Two protections. And so consequently, the, uh, Luthe Citizens Coalition and the Luthe Civic Association on behalf of its members, uh, respectfully request that this commission deny this application. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. Was there anyone else from the public signed up for comment on this item?
No, sir.
All right. Thank you. Uh, oh, rebuttal. I will turn it over to the applicant for rebuttal at this time.
Uh, yes, briefly. With respect to the Zone One protections for, uh, for underground storage tanks, uh, first of all, that would relate to the rezoning. I think what he's referring to is there is a rezoning that's been filed with Hillsborough County in this general vicinity where a, uh, gas station, convenience store is proposed, but that's not the subject of this amendment. Um, but the underground storage tanks are protected by Zone One. They are given double the allowable radius. Typically, the FDEP radius for, uh, wellhead protection for underground storage tanks is 500 feet. Hillsborough County actually has a more stringent standard and they include 1,000 feet. And so they will be protected. Um, again, our hydrogeologist is available to answer any questions you might have about that, but they still will have that, that protection and can't just randomly, I couldn't as a private property owner, apply for a plan amendment for Zone Two protection because I thought that would be more valuable for my property or it would be better for my neighborhood. Zone Two protection is only appropriate where the assets that are mapped are also located. And therefore it's not appropriate to have Zone Two protections anymore if that asset is no longer in place. And with that, I'm all here to answer any questions and respectfully request your approval.
Thank you. All right. With that, I will open it up to the commissioners for any comments or questions that they may have on this item. Not seeing any lights going on in the room. I do not see any hands or faces on the WebEx. So with that, I will go on ahead and close the public comment and open it up to motions from the commissioners. Commissioner Doughty, yes?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would, uh, move that the Planning Commission find, uh, Hillsborough County CPA 21 dash zero three consistent with the future of Hillsborough Comprehensive Plan and forward it to the Board of County Commissioners.
We got a motion of consistency by Commissioner Doughty, a second by Commissioner Marino. Is there any more discussion from the commissioners on this item? Seeing none on the WebEx and none in the room, I will ask the clerk to go ahead and do a roll call vote on this item.
Bernstein?
Yes.
Cardina?
Yes.
Dick?
Yes.
Doughty?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Perez?
Yes.
Lenko?
Yes.
Moreno?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Joseph?
Yes.
Motion carried ten to zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you, Commissioners, and I also want to thank our partners from Hillsborough County for being, um, assisting us with this amendment and providing the technical information. And, um, thank you for being here for the public hearing.
Thank you. All right. That is the last item on our agenda. So with that, I will thank staff, thank all the applicants for their time, and I will adjourn this meeting.